Okay. Calling to order the South Borough zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, March 29th, 2025. Nineteenth, this is why I have to put my glasses on. What did I say?
Twenty ninth.
March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Thank you. The first item we have on our agenda this evening is Six Lorenzo Drive. Bartolini Properties on behalf of Brendan Griffin, special permit. Now, this is continued, so just, we don't need to read it. Just a reminder, petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow more than three garage bays. Properties located in residential A zoning district relief is requested under section one seventy four dash eight point two. Do you have something to present this evening or discuss?
We do. Laura's gonna pull it up.
If you could just. identify yourself.
Sure. I'm Michael Bartolini from Bartolini Properties. Address nine McNeil Drive. This is the owner Brendan Griffin of Six Lorenzo Drive.
Okay.
So, under bylaw one seventy four dash eight point two, Residence A, Section B twelve. The applicant Brendan is applying for an accessory garage for the storage and enjoyment of his collectible cars. Can you pull up the house plan? Just the actual house plan. Yeah, it'll give me the whole thing. The structure itself is a twenty four by twenty eight, two bay, single door garage. With a bonus room of approximately six hundred and seventy two square feet of space on the second floor. So what we're looking to do, in addition to the three bays that we currently have, is to add the two bay. So in total, including the existing three bays. We should be able to accommodate up to eight cars, and that would be with the use of lifts. So four in the accessory. Or however he wants to do it. So, in the beginning, when Brendan came to me with this. It was fairly important to me that we had and made the look of the garage. Maintain the flow with the rest of the neighborhood. I am the builder at Lorenzo Drive. Myself and my brothers and. It's got the same roofing, it's got the same siding, it's gonna have the same metal roof, it's gonna have the same standards, same. Pretty much everything should fit fairly seamlessly into the garage, into the neighborhood as it is. If you scroll down Laura, it'll show you the interior side sections. We meet all height requirements, we meet all setbacks. The first bay, or the lower section of the garage is tall enough to accommodate those. Lifts so that he is able to not keep anything in the driveway, everything will be stored within the unit. And then the second floor, he's gonna be using as bonus room, could be office, man cave, that kind of thing. So. You want to go to the site plan, proposed site plan?
Yep.
Thank you. So. To minimize the. The visual aspect of it, it is going to be the rear of the house. Does meet the setback requirement. There is a portion of the wall that we'll probably have to remove. The reason we did that was because we wanted to keep it as far back and. Slightly to the left of the existing house. Again, to minimize any kind of visual impact to the neighborhood. And then, do you mind giving me the photos? Thanks. You can scroll through them, it doesn't. So, there's already a driveway existing to the right of that truck there. Are those the ones I gave you today? Yeah, please, thank you. It's okay. So that's the house as it sits in the cul-de-sac now. It's gonna be. The house is elevated. The top of the garage is not gonna be nearly as high as that. But it is going to be set closer to the tree line in the back. You're the next one. I think I have one with like a purple line on it, the one I had you replace. So if you can see the purple outline on the ground there. That's gonna be the actual. Layout of the unit itself. So like I said, it's a twenty four by twenty eight garage. And. We believe it meets all the special requirement. Aspects that it needs to. And again, it's for personal use only. And it's so Brendan can use his cars.
The way that's set on Lorenzo Drive, are there any butters behind or no?
Uh, I mean, not, you can't see them.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, there are, they're fairly setback, Russ Gregory's off to the left there and then. You can't see it. And then further back is breakneck. So like across from Davis Farmland.
Okay. And what about, what about this, to this side?
Oh, there is open space in between, so we have an open space buffer to the rear.
Before you get the breakneck.
Yes, so there's a, it's a flex development, so there is open space that surrounds the entire property. So that is actually the house that we're currently building, so. We are the butter. So I took that from a second floor window.
Okay. Doug? You have any questions?
I have no questions.
Paul?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I follow what's going on.
Okay.
Mike? I will say though, like I'm not here in Southport, but elsewhere I've. Been in the process of doing something similar to this, where the garage is. It's actually was required to put it in the back right corner, so similar to what you're doing there, so it does. Yeah, I think it comes out looking pretty good, actually.
Yeah, I.
And it's like, I can, and I can show you a picture of something I have currently, I mean, it, it really. Like you said, and one of the scale is obviously not as high as the house. And then when it's set back further to the scale looks even, the scale looks even smaller.
Right.
So it's, it's, that's why they ask us to do it that way. So this is, I think, well, well designed and. And positioned, yes.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah.
Doris?
Um, I don't really have any questions. I, maybe just one, I like the way it's looking on the layout, setback. Unfortunately, they're gonna have to take the retaining wall down and rebuild it. How big is the overall lot? It just looked like a lot of building. On the lot itself. That'd be, you know, is that a half acre?
No, it's a flex. I don't know off the top of my head, it's. If it's not an acre, it might be a little bit over. It's somewhere around there, but every. Every lot in that neighborhood is a give or take an acre. Actually, it might be on that.
It's, I have one point one three two acres.
Yep. It's a little. Yep.
But that, that's, that's all of them on the flex? Or no?
They're, I mean, they all vary in size.
Yeah.
But it's not the same requirement as your standard A.
Because it's, because it's a flexible development, right?
Yep.
Yep, right, got it.
So you can go, the setbacks are different, it's just, it allows you to obtain more open space to the back. And in different areas. So it's a little more flexible, obviously, on where you can place things.
Right, but and, and you have a requirement for more, for a certain amount of open space relative to the size of the development.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Thanks for answering that, but you know, I'm generally liking the way it looks.
Okay. Jamie, you, you, I don't think, I think you caught, caught most of it.
I did, yeah, I think I signed on at like seven oh two. I don't know, I don't know why, in my head I was thinking of a story at seven thirty. Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was, you know, that was my, I think Doris kind of asked what I was interested in, is that they do look like, kind of narrow long lots, but. I am becoming more familiar with what the flexible developments are. As far as the visual look, I think I'm in agreement, it's already been said. To have it basically kind of line up and be set back, I think is a, is a better look. So I don't really have any, any concerns with it either. And as you said, you're doing the development, I don't imagine we have any butters here that are gonna raise an issue. So.
That was gonna be my only question, if there was any of her. If, if, if there wasn't butter within the proximity of the hand, there we go. Please.
Yep.
Good evening, my name is Jason Malinowski, I'm at seven Lorenzo Drive. I honestly wish I wasn't here tonight, consider myself a friend of Mike's, he built my house. But my wife Chelsea and I live directly across the street from this, and we are vehemently opposed to any aspect of this. I realize there may be some things that you may allow, so I'm just gonna lay out a few things for you to consider as you. Come up with your recommendation. First and foremost, our house is directly across the street from this. We will look right at this. I have no doubt that Mike and his brothers will have the finest quality in terms of any construction that they would do there. But all your comments that you just made were focused on the rear, not the front. I'm gonna come to process. When you sent out your butter notices. Only two out of the four homes that are actually built and occupied on the street got it, because you sent. The notices to the proponent, because for whatever reason. The town had not swapped them over. These houses did not close yesterday, like they've been on the tax rolls for a while, so just, I think from a process perspective, you should be aware of that, that. Not every neighbor received the notice, based on the butter list that was sent, it went to the proponent. Our concern originally was raised by the use of the word enjoyment in the application. When Mr. Griffin actually reached out to me yesterday and talked about it, he told me there was two cars. A two car that fit two cars, so to hear eight tonight. On top of a three car garage. It's a lot of cars. And I think this board and the town have wrestled with issues in other areas of town. This is a purely residential neighborhood, approximately ten, eleven homes, depending on the final build out. It just does not seem like the right place. There's young children all over, up and down that street. These are not the quietest cars, what we're talking about either. You can hear them. With doors, windows shut when they start across the street. These are not the type of cars that you start in your driveway and just hear them there. So it asks you to be cognizant of what you're approving as well. The final thing I will say is, while I have no doubt that my neighbor has the best intentions and is nothing short of a great neighbor. Homes turnover. Circumstances change. And you can't control, or you don't know. And this just seems wildly out of place for the neighborhood that my wife and I just moved into a couple of years ago, we've been residents of the town much longer than that. And are just very concerned with. What this means going forward in terms of what's gonna go on in that space. And our final comment really resides around what's actually going in there. Talked about the eight cars, but the need for a bonus room and a bathroom screams to me an office. The home already is four thousand plus square feet. There is plenty of space, whether it be, I don't know if the basement's finished or not in the home. But there's plenty of space for other, other parts of this to take place. If it was limited to purely a garage with just cars. I think I'd be standing here with maybe a different tone than I'm presenting, so that's our concerns for you to consider with the application.
Good question.
Oh, go ahead, dude. I, yeah, I don't know if this is the same thing, you said that butter notices didn't go to all neighbors, are there other neighbors? That are not here this evening that are also.
I don't know if any are on Zoom or not. I, 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 I. I'm a busy person, I didn't have the time to go around the neighborhood and canvass. I felt it was important enough for me to come and share our concerns. And the concerns were really raised by the fact that. Prior to Mr. Griffin moving into the neighborhood, the proponent, not Mike, sitting in front of us. One of his brothers went around the neighborhood telling us about. The business that Mr. Griffin is in, Mr. Griffin has tried to assure me that that's not what we're talking about here. But there is a business that he is involved with that involves cars, like there's all, it's all tied together. I, again, I have nothing. But trust that he's telling me the right thing. But our concerns were raised by the proponents that are sitting in front of us, talking about a business before they even moved in.
Okay. Like, go.
Yeah, so I, my first, before you'd stepped down. I just want to touch base to Laura on notice, if you can stay there for just a second. So, can you get, give us any clarity with respect to notices, where they delivered? I just want to make sure we're not missing any pieces.
For, so I think, and correct me from misunderstanding. I think what my understanding is, is that the butters list listed. Bartolini Properties as the owner. Of two of the abutting properties and not the current homeowner.
Okay, so.
The, the notices went out. But I think the issue is with the butters listed.
Who would it have gone to the house, or would it just gone to someone else's? It would have gone.
Yeah.
Usually it goes to the address.
Yeah, but I will say, in terms of notifying a butters, I mean, in a separate. Flexible development in our neighborhood, the town had the exact same problem, they sent notices and two of the neighbors that are in their houses didn't receive them because. They went to the developer, so, I mean, I, I'm not, certainly not questioning it. It does seem like a problem of the, if then, if there's neighbors that were not notified, but.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern.
Can I, sorry. We did, I did speak with both those neighbors that didn't get them. So just.
Okay.
So you're aware.
Okay. All right. But I, I, but I, I, I mean, I have kind of a. I have a fundamental problem with the, the way we're doing these notifications, that, that their butters don't get. Notified, I, I, I can't necessarily question you, but I need to know that.
Yeah, I totally believe you, it's not even a question, but at the same time, like. Come on. How, how is it the town's sending notices to? The former owner effect?
Yeah.
Right, so by any legal standard, that's insufficient notice. I mean.
For legal reasons, we would have to resend the notices to make sure everyone.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I, I was gonna say, I, again, I, I, I'm not questioning that the owners weren't notified, but it seems from a legal standpoint, we would have to resend them. And make sure that they go to the, the correct owners before we continue.
I would agree.
So, my question on that is. I have to send the notices based on the butters list that's provided, the butters list that's provided needs to be within the last ninety days. So. I'm trying to think, so, so that we can prevent this from happening in the future, this is something I will be bringing up with the assessor's office tomorrow. How, I guess, how do we know if I get in a butters list? That these are not the correct homeowners? Just. I, I don't want this happening again.
Yeah, it, I mean, the, the larger question, this is the part I don't understand, is like, I know in our particular neighborhood. People right next to it did not get notified, yet. The assessor's office was able to send them a tax bill. I can't really figure out how. Those two things happen at the same time, and it's not, I understand the ninety days, like in this case, and I'm not, not. Casting aspersions on anybody, but in the, in the case that I'm personally involved with, I mean, they've been there for over a year, it's, this, it's not like, well, they just, just wasn't updated, it's like. They've been paying their tax bill.
Yeah.
I. It, to me, it raises questions with how these, how the assessor's office is maintaining their list, like why is it happening that we get this? A butters list and it's, and it's wrong.
Right.
When were the properties conveyed, Mike? Like the ones who are talking about?
Wanna say it was, I mean, they're not super, it's January of twenty four, and I wanna say April of twenty four.
Really? So, so multiple tax cycles though, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I, yeah, don't control the.
I, I, I know, I know. It's not on you.
It's a year and change.
That's crazy.
Can't update them. Come on.
Yeah.
Right.
Come on.
Yeah.
If they can give the people their tax bill, they can give us accurate a butters list, because just from a legal perspective. There's no question in my mind, I'm sure Michael talked to the butters, but from a legal perspective.
Yeah.
It's insufficient.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And so there's that issue. And then the question that I had of the butter was. So you have a question, you're concerned not only with the number of cars, but that there's gonna be an office in that space as well?
They, they, I think Mike used the term bonus space, was it like six hundred square feet, Mike?
It's about approximately six seventy two, so. Yeah, I mean, it's. Basically, there's an area for space to be used, right?
Like, got it, but what's your concern with? Space there?
You have space for an office, a bathroom? It leaves it open for commercial use.
Yeah.
But that would.
It's not zone commercial.
That would have, it would have to be permitted.
It would have to be a permitted commercial use.
No one can ever stop someone from doing something commercial, I mean, we have no way to enforce or have jurisdiction, if it's not proper, I mean, but. There would be no way to prevent someone, I mean.
Just, just so you know.
That out of their living room too, if they.
Correct.
You know, for, for us as a zoning board, like I'm always concerned. About having uniformity and consistency and that way, people are getting reasonable expectations out of. Your property, so if you wanted to build a man cave. And work from home in your back office, and you wanted to build a space, you're free to be able to do that. I see the concern with the number of cars, but from a practical standpoint, we want uniformity, but I also believe in. A property owner's right to be able to use that property as long as it's not interfering unduly so on the butters.
That's, I mean, you know the rules.
No, no.
I'm pointing out, I'm just pointing out our concerns.
I'm just trying to elaborate, like kind of my feelings and position.
If, if there's a decision, it could be reiterated that this is not for commercial use, it's, it's, commercial use is not allowable, I mean, that could be. Put into a.
That could be.
I know, but I'm saying, it's not, but that could be.
But sometimes that's something that I think gives them peace of mind, right?
If, yeah, it's redundant, but sure.
So.
It's, it's a little too late now, but typically when I'm, when I'm putting space above the garage, I just kind of delineated as storage.
So, uh, but I.
It doesn't.
So I think, I think. Sorry, Jamie.
Sorry, can I ask you a question? What was the, the discussion on the eight cars? These are personal cars or? Was not suggesting that this is part of a business? Is that where the computer?
Where I was about to get to, yeah, like, I was gonna ask the petition.
No, so I think what happened is, a lot of times when we sell houses, people ask what. The buyer does. Brendan has a company that sells, and he probably can tell you better than I can. Basically, they're called tune-ups. So it's basically, it's a computer program.
Correct, yeah, so I'm a computer engineer, basically, so, but I write programs for. The car, like your car, any car in this, in this. In this room, so we're not working on cars, we're not changing oil, we're not doing things like that.
Are you buying, selling cars and you're using that space as a holding?
I have a personal collection, and we have a, we have a ten thousand square foot facility in Upton, and then we got another facility in San Diego, and. My stuff's spread out, and I just like, it'd be nice just to have some things at home.
Got it.
Running to and fro is kind of tough, especially, and, you know, even though I have a small collection, there are all sorts of different cars.
Sure.
Some sporty, some not, but I'm the only one that drives them, so there's only one. At a, at a time, and then realistically, we live in New England, so we got about three good months. So they're really just gonna sit. On lifts and collect dust and, you know, something to talk about and look at, but. Not active use of going up and down every day and being worked on and torn apart and in the driveway, I'm a pretty private, clean person, so I prefer everything. Behind closed doors, privacy, things like that, so. These aren't cars that I planned on leaving outside. But in our current configuration, when we're building the house. When I saw the foundation port for the main garage, I kind of went back to Mike and I was like. Can we do something else, you know, down the road, and he proposed. That, that would be the best scenario is to, to build that accessory garage in the back after we moved in. You know, so I can have access and enjoyment to the cars, you know, in most cases. In the rear, it's nice to have something separate from the children and the noise to kind of hang out and, you know, have, have a. A fun space in the back.
Got it.
Regardless of having space in the house for an office, it's nice to have a, you know, TV and a couch, me and my son can go up there and hang out. But for the most part, the main area is just to store vehicles.
Alright.
I just wanted to understand what you're asking, trying to make sure I understand your concerns as well. And then my overall head exploding nervous is not going correctly. It's a waste of everybody's time.
Yeah, it, it, it is, I, 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 I think. We really don't have a choice but to continue it and make sure that the butters get notified. What exactly we need to do in terms of getting the butters notified. Is, you know, a little bit outside, I mean, all I can do is ask that we confirm that through the assessor's office and make sure they, that they get notified. But, I mean, I think, I think you're right, Mike, we, like legally speaking, I don't think we could possibly rule on it when.
Because what, the reason, just so everybody understands, the reasoning with lack of notice. Is if we issue a decision. And let's just say, and I'm not saying we do, but let's say we approve it and someone wants to appeal it, or we deny it. There's an instant ground for appeal for insufficiency of notice. It, 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 it's on its face, zero go back, and it's just a waste of time, and it's. Beyond frustrating for me to hear. But I, I don't feel like we have a choice.
Yeah.
That's a, a year and a half?
Yeah.
Come on, like, I thought he was, had the year, when Mike said it was January, I thought he was literally January twenty twenty five. I mean, come on.
Like, like, like I said, I mean.
You gotta be kidding me.
I know that the people across the street have been in for over a year, year and a half, and when notice went out, they didn't, they didn't get it, so.
So, again, I, I hate to waste anyone's time, but I, I just, I, I think with insufficiency of notice, it, it's just, it's a debt, it's a waste of your time for us to give any decision. Because they can just appeal it and win, just because they, we never got noticed, and they'd be accurate, and I believe Michael. But the fact that the postage went out with the incorrect recipient, when it's clearly the town's fault. That's the problem.
So, um, once, once we send out notification, how, how, what's as soon as we can actually continue the hearing to, do you know what, what that, what that is?
So, I need to send notice at least fourteen days prior.
Okay.
So. I can send it as early as next week, and then. I send it.
On to.
I mean, we're looking, we're looking at our April, we could do.
We said the sixteenth?
Yeah, that's our regular meeting.
Good.
So if I send, I can send them out next week, that would give us. Week of the thirty-first.
Yep.
And the week of the seventh. So we could, it would be our.
Sixteenth would work, okay.
I'll make it work, I, I, I can't stand stuff like this, like, so I'll, I'll move things around if I have to, I'm so sorry for the waste of time.
Thank you.
Do you, do you want to continue it to our regular meeting on the sixteenth, or do you want to do a special meeting?
What do we need to do with the petition? I think, or we have to request a continuance, but it's.
Yeah.
Petitioners' application still. It's arguable that they could proceed tonight, knowing that it's a failed notice, but I, I, to me, it's a question of. Do you know what I'm saying? Cause like, it has been published on the town site. So there, there is no constructive notice as opposed to actual notice. Um.
Well, I, I mean, it is always subject to.
You know what I'm saying? Like, from a, from a practical standpoint.
Yeah.
It's their choice.
It is their choice.
Um.
But I, I, I mean, I think really if. I think I would like to request that we be able to do that.
Continuing this meeting. Is that even contestable? Or does it have to be like a new meeting?
I don't think it is.
No, we've, we've done pre-notice.
Okay. Let me just try to unpackage this for a second. And I, pardon, but like, I've been just trying to figure this out, it makes sense for everybody. So in my mind, I see a flaw with service from the town. However. It was part, you know, it's part, it's on the town website, so theoretically, they've been noticed and I totally believe. Michael Bartolini when he says he spoke to them. So if the petitioner wanted us to move forward, and this is hypothetical. The petitioner wanted us to move forward for a decision tonight. And we render a decision. Your butters can clearly, uh, appeal the decision based on insufficiency of notice. Well, let's just say for argument's sake, they don't, and no one appeals that argument. Decision gets rendered. Question still is notice, because if they didn't know about it, decision goes forward, so you get a valid decision. Just say it gets approved, I'm not approving it or not, believe me, I'm not. But, um. The decision gets entered. Then they go, wait a minute, we didn't even know about it. They could still, I think, appeal that.
Yeah.
That's my concern, and so my question is, is. It's really what I think what the petitioner wants.
Yeah, i- i- it is, I mean, it's, it's problematic to me to try to go forward, knowing that they're not notified. And I think that puts, to me, it puts us in a position of basically requesting to the applicant.
It's your call.
We can continue with.
This is your hearing, this is your meeting. You petition the town. If you, as the petitioner, want to take the risk. I think that's their call, right? And I'm asking them.
Well.
Well, I would defer to your judgment.
Yeah. But I just, I just think we're in a position where. I, I'm asking the applicant to continue it to April sixteenth. Knowing that they, you know, that it is there, it is up to them, not necessarily up to us.
I'm thinking, trying to think of this a couple of moves.
Okay.
I think we're fine. Because it was published, right?
So. I, I am not legal counsel. Um, it was published in the newspaper as it was supposed to. Um, it was posted on the town website, it was posted in the town hall and the building department and mailed to the butters on the list that I was given.
Okay.
Which I will be calling Paul first thing in the morning.
I think the town is covered. It doesn't make me happy, but I'm just saying from a, a legal perspective.
Yeah.
We, the petitioner did everything right, was provided those addresses, whether erroneously or not. We published this. I think, I hear what you're saying, but I'm just saying it's up to you to either say, hey, listen, I want a decision tonight and I'll take that risk. Or no, I'll destroy, and it's your call. And so, think about it, you all.
Okay.
Yeah, Jack.
Yes.
You.
So, based on what I've.
John Bartolini Jr., Four Wire Circle, Bartolini Builders, I, I own the subdivision into the property I sell to Michael. I believe that, just to clarify something, Michael didn't send, the town didn't send the letters to Michael. I may have gotten them, I don't remember getting them, but my wife may have gotten them.
Sure.
I didn't, I didn't get them, so they didn't. Just so Mr. Malinowski knows, the, the letters didn't go to Michael himself and he just said, the heck with it.
Okay.
So, uh, and it appears that Mr. Malinowski also talked to the neighbors as well. Uh, but my, my question is more to the point of, um, you're talking about appeals. So. It appeals that two butters did not get notice. They're the only ones that would have standing for an appeal.
Is right.
Correct.
So. Anybody else who's here or listening doesn't have the right to appeal.
Anyone can appeal, they would have standing for, for lack.
They gotta have standing.
Lack, standing for lack of notice.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Malinowski can appeal because he's.
Right.
Happy, but he can't appeal because of lack of notes.
No, the, the causation for the butter, like, if they woke up tomorrow and heard that this got approved. And they go, what are you talking about? I never heard of this in my life. They would have grounds to appeal the decision, even though they didn't attend.
Right.
They, they would have rights based on just insufficiency of notice and they're going to win.
And that would be it.
That would be it.
Okay.
And we have a hand raised on Zoom? Bring them in.
Sharon, you should be able to speak. Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Hi, uh, good evening, everyone, um, my name is Sharon Creitman, my husband Kyle and I, we live at two Lorenzo Drive. Actually, in one of the pictures that you saw, um, we were two houses over, you could see our house, so this would be very visible to us. Um, I do share a lot of the same sentiments as, uh, the Malinowskis. Um, I am worried about the noise. Um, again, like Jason mentioned, um, we have a one-year-old, the house next to us, I believe, has a four-year-old. Um, across the street from us, there's a four-year-old and I believe a seven-year-old. Uh, the Malinowskis have three young kids. Um, this is definitely a children community, uh, the kids are going across the street, uh, to see each other's neighbors, so. Um, that's definitely my concern of having cars in and out. Um, Mr. Griffin mentioned having, um, you know, people come to look at the cars. To me, that kind of gives me a red flag, thinking that is very quiet community where. We live so close to Route Nine and we don't even hear the cars, that now we're going to be potentially concerned with our children not being able to. Cross the road easily, there might be cars, there might be noise. Um, so just wanted to express those sentiments, uh, those same sentiments that Jason had, um, I'm in agreement with.
And, uh, can I ask if you received a notification or not?
I did receive it. Um, it, yeah, it did go to me, but, and I did see on the list, a lot of them. Um, like for Lorenzo Drive, which moved in a, a few months after us. Um, did not go to the actual recipients, it went to, um, it, it listed Bartolini Builders.
This, uh, number four, number nine.
Mm-hmm.
Number four, number nine didn't get notified?
Yep, but I did talk to them.
Hey, can I just clarify a second? When, uh, when you're, you were saying people to look at the cars and you're, or.
I didn't believe that, I don't know where that.
Where, wha- whatever you had said, I was, my understanding is it's, you invite someone over for dinner and you're like, look at my car, not like.
Sure.
Not, not for, uh.
We all have collections of things.
Yeah.
I'm not inviting people, it's, I'm not.
This isn't like at the office and, hey, everyone back to my house, you know, bring clients, it's, it's, uh. Someone's over for, like I said, someone's over to watch the barbecue.
Exactly, it's just a, it's a.
Let me show you what I have.
It's a nice memento, but no, there won't be people visiting, it's a very quiet neighborhood, I'm pretty much invisible there, so. It's just for my own personal.
Right, this isn't creating extra traffic or.
Correct, yeah, sunny Saturday, I may take something different depending on my mood and just, you know, would like the freedom to do that.
And you've got kids as well?
I do have kids, yeah.
How many kids do you have?
One kid.
So. Yeah, go ahead.
Nope, that's our.
Um, so I, I guess I'm curious how the applicant feels, if, if you're agreeable to the continuation?
Uh, can we have a minute to talk about it? Is that?
Absolutely.
Certainly.
Sure, I'll do like a, a recess?
Yeah.
What are we on time?
Uh, we're already, we're in.
Very.
We're very.
Yeah, but, um. Why don't we, why don't we take a three-minute recess?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
All right, and we are back from recess, so. You had a discussion?
Uh, we did. Um, I think we're gonna wait, so we'll do, um, we'll continue, I guess.
Okay.
The next meeting. I guess the question is, the next meeting, because you said this-
We're, we're, we're on the, uh, scheduled to meet on April sixteenth right now.
Okay.
So, given the, the notice, what Ms. Davis talked about, that seems like that's the right amount of time to make sure notification goes out and, and we can review again.
Okay.
So you're, you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
All right. There's a motion for continuing with public attorney.
Uh, to April sixteenth, and do we have any, do we have anything scheduled yet?
We have two other applications, but they haven't been scheduled for times yet, so.
Let's make this seven.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do this at seven. So April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M.
I'm sorry for our both sides, sincerely. Uh, butters, petitioners, our-
Do you have a second?
I'll second what you do.
Okay.
Oh.
Microphones.
I will second that.
Okay. All right, uh, we have a motion to continue to April sixteenth with a second. Uh, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay. Because Jamie joined in, um, Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And William's eye. So we'll continue to April sixteenth. Thank you, and again, sorry for the inconvenience.
Fifteen minutes of our life will never get back.
Okay, so-
Right.
The second item on our, our agenda is two sixty-four Corderville Road, Elliot Fontaine special permit. You have a notice to read?
I do. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the McCalliv Hearing Room, Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen P M. With regard to the petition of Elliot Fontaine, two sixty-four Corderville Road, Southborough, Mass., the petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow a sign in a residential district for illegal, non-conforming use. The property is located in the Residential B zoning district. Relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash nine, section one seventy-four dash eleven, and section one seventy-four dash twenty.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, good evening. Are you, uh, the applicant or representing the applicant?
Yes, Elliot.
Yeah.
Elliot Fontaine, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So if you, if you, do you have anything that you want to present or discuss?
Uh, no, I just want to put a sign up.
Okay, all right. Uh, sorry, could, it, it, just formality, could you just rec, um, identify yourself?
Elliot Fontaine at two sixty-four Corderville Road, at Fine Automotive Services.
Okay, so, um, uh, you probably know this, this property has an interesting history.
Very interesting.
But, uh, just clarify for me.
Yeah.
You're, you're now the owner of the property?
Um, renting.
You're renting, okay, okay. And when did that begin?
January.
Okay.
January first.
Okay, so it was, I don't know if you guys all remember, but-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that's a good thing, right?
Yeah.
Been a couple of months now, so.
But, yeah, there was, there was plenty of discussion and plenty of concern, and I think it was very legitimate.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I'm, for the record and for my own peace of mind, you're clearly a new tenant. We're not gonna bring the sins of the past-
Yeah.
To this property. It is zoned commercial.
Yes.
There's nothing wrong with that. This is really only about the fact that you want to put that sign-
Correct.
On the, on the building, correct? Uh, and it's, um, what is the, what's the reason why he had, the, the special perm is needed? Because-
Because it's within a residential district.
Oh, okay.
It's for illegal, non-conforming use.
Okay.
So, which is special permit required.
And, and also, to be clear, again, for the record, the planning board, you've been before the planning board.
Correct.
They've reviewed it, uh, all the thi, all the, the, I think there's five things they need to look at.
Yeah, they okayed those.
They okayed all of them. I think, as far as I could tell, it was all unanimous. There's no dissenting amongst, amongst them.
Correct.
I don't, I'm not aware of anybody having opposition to putting a sign on a, I mean, it's on the building, you're not putting it up.
Correct, yeah, it's in the same location as the old sign was.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
What was that?
Yeah, um-
He's, he's kidding.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't-
Paul, Paul.
He was like, you know, nice billboard, like, literally will get us killed.
Um, so, any, any questions or discussion from any board members? Doug?
No, I mean, I walk past this almost every day on my way to the train. It's been an auto shop, always been an auto shop.
Yep.
You know, signs going up on the building looks fine from my perspective. I don't think it's attracting from the neighborhood and should be, have a sign for the business, so.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, I agree. I think there should be a, a sign on the property.
Okay.
I'm just always thoughtful about nighttime illumination.
There's not gonna be any illumination.
I figured, I just wanted to make it clarified for the record.
Yep, yeah, it's written in there that there's no-
Good question.
I just-
Yeah, yeah.
For the record.
Yeah.
I just-
Don't let that one, don't let that one slide by.
We do have like a time.
We do, yeah. So that's why I wanted it on the record.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Doris?
You know, I'm in favor of, um, of putting the sign on the building where the sign was. It looks flush to the building. Just a dimensional question, I think it's within the code's dimensions. I don't think this was ever permitted to. I thought I read that somewhere in the notes.
Uh, let's not go all the way down through all the-
Yeah, we're not, no.
A clean slate.
We'd be here a long time.
Okay, no, but I'm in favor, so everybody relax.
Okay.
I think it's, it's always been an auto shop. It, there's always been a sign there. Um, and I think it's in the dimensional requirements, um, of the sign flush to the building, no lighting, you know, um.
Okay.
And I won't talk further. There we go.
And just so you guys know too, this will have to be permitted through the building department.
Correct.
In terms of dimensional regulations and stuff like that, we'll have another set of ideas on it.
Okay. Jamie?
Uh, no questions, no issues.
Okay, right. Yeah, I, I, I don't really have any questions either. Uh, as I, I already stated, this has been zoned this way for years.
Yeah.
Uh, you have the legal right to have it. This, the sign makes perfect sense to me, so. Okay, um, is there anybody from the public raising a hand?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, nobody else needs to speak? Uh, in that case, I think we could-
Make a ma, uh, want to close the public hearing? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
All right, motion has been made to close the public hearing with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay. Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And William's eye.
Make a motion to approve the petition as requested.
I'll second that.
All right, motion to approve the petition as requested has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay. Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And William's eye. It's approved.
Good.
So, well. There's a little bit more.
You're not there yet.
You know, from a process-
This is Massachusetts.
We have fourteen days to write the decision and file it with the town clerk. We try to have them done earlier, um, but it could take up to fourteen days.
Okay, but I can start the process of like getting everything.
Yeah, you could start like the sign permit application with the building department and stuff like that. So there is a twenty-day appeal period after it's filed with the town clerk.
Do I have to do that again? Because I started off doing a sign permit and then I had to do the special zoning.
You could probably just continue with the same sign permit.
Okay.
But it won't be approved by the building commissioner until the appeal period is over and this decision is recorded at the registered D.
Okay.
So I'll send you an email tomorrow with all the details.
Awesome.
What's the business you're running there?
Uh, it's an auto repair shop.
Nice.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Good luck to you. Good to see something succeed there.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.
You too.
Are you the owner and the mechanic or?
Yeah, I do everything.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Great. Okay.
Sky.
Yeah, so-
Grab the fresh air.
Yeah. The, yeah, that's right to tell.
I don't want to jinx it.
Should be-
I don't think we screwed that one up yet. That's a big Navy.
Do we have the ability to go back and edit tape? Oh, okay.
Jesus.
Um, so the next item we have on the agenda is Two Park Central Drive Capital Group Properties special permit regarding the use of multiple principal uses on one lot. Uh, do you have, you have the notice?
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the McCalliv Hearing Room, Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty P M. With regard to petition of Capital Group Properties, Two Park Central Drive, Southborough, Mass., the petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow multiple principal uses on one lot. The property is located in the industrial and industrial park zoning districts. Relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash nine and section one seventy-four dash eight. Thank you.
You, and you're, you're for, yeah, as the applicant or for the applicant?
Yep, I'm Shannon Weiss. I'm the real estate permitting manager for Capital Group Properties as managing agent for three seventy-one Turnpike LLC.
Right, so this is very similar, right?
Yeah, I'm probably gonna be here like once a month doing it for every one of our properties. But I actually did want to ask, after I considered the application, so you know how like the very back portion of this property is in the industrial park section? Can we also add a use from there? Like, would scientific research be a good one for this one? Because when I was reading that, it said you want a property that's like sort of centrally located right next to a very main area, and Two Park Central is right there at nine and four ninety-five. So I'm wondering if, uh, scientific research might be a decent one to add, or if that's not really something you would want to put in an office building. I mean, what, is it like, is scientific research as far as Southborough concerned, is that like heavy, you know, like research, that kind of a thing? Like, what is it?
Ah, I don't-
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's worth adding that, that in there to give us a little extra wiggle room for more tenants, you know?
So, sorry, are you saying that, um, uh, it's located in industrial and industrial park?
Yeah, so the vast majority of the building is in industrial, but the little bitty baby back end and then all that land back there is in the industrial park. So, yeah, just a quarter.
Yeah, we're vaguely familiar.
Vaguely. What are we to do with land behind Two Park Central?
Oh, my.
Any bells?
No, no.
Wow.
Um, ah, I mean, so what you're describing, scientific research, I don't, I don't think that crosses any, or brings any, any major red flags in-
Okay.
My mind. Um, I, I, I would think-
Scary, scarier than it is.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, Harvard monkeys.
Right, that's, I don't want anyone to get that impression, you know what I mean?
You know, that's where I used to live, in the monkey farm.
So-
Right next to it.
I, I'm gonna, but I'm gonna say, I, I think, I'm just gonna suggest you probably should just stick to-
Stick with what we got here, you think?
Yeah, I would, I would treat that separately if you don't mind.
It does give us a, a lot of, a lot of possibilities with what we already have here, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so, do you want to, do you want to talk at all about the, the application or, or some of the findings? Because I mean, I-
Sure, if, if anyone has any questions, basically, I'm mainly doing this one because we have another prospective tenant. It's Charles River Medical Association, their primary care office. And they're already in one of our other offices, but they're looking for more space. So they want to take suite one forty here at Two Park Central. So that's the medical clinical use that I'm asking for. And then I just wrapped in the other uses, the retails and the newspaper, because they just felt like they might be decent fits.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and the, and the, and the parking analysis, right, it was-
It worked.
To me like it was, it was pretty solid.
Yeah, it's pretty solid. We get-
All of the, all the uses have sufficient parking.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I did a couple of calculations based on gee, if these three available spaces, aside from the Charles River one, if they were office, would it work? And it did. And it had tons of space left. If they were all clinical, would it work? And it did. So, we got a good parking situation over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I did, I did look at that pretty closely and it seemed like it was all-
Yeah.
Looked pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I, I did provide, I saw it on the, um, the online agenda materials, the incorrect, uh, plot, the plan that I added is still in there. But I did upload the correct one from, that Karina gave me from planning after Chris noted that that was the wrong plan, so. Okay. It is uploaded to the portal.
Okay, yes, gotcha. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I put the wrong one in. Sorry.
All right, um.
Any questions?
Yeah, the, the board, does the board have any questions regarding the, the, the application? Doug?
No, I would say similar to last time. I'm a big supporter of us trying to help our office buildings in town. And obviously, I think this is a very complimentary use. I don't think it attracts from anything. Uh, there's sufficient parking, uh, both for the, the medical use, but also the other uses. I mean, again, I think our idea is that we have limited office growth, and so, I think this is a good use and I don't have any concerns with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
I'm gonna say the same thing last time that I agree with Doug.
Okay, it's a solid position to take.
Exactly.
Uh, Mike?
No comment.
Doris?
Um, I, I really liked the idea that we could put, I don't know, exactly what kind of doctor's offices, but we could put some more medical resources in, in the town, fill some of our office space. One tiny like concern, and I think the applicant expressed it well, the word research, you know. Um, as long as we're not manufacturing, which I doubt we would be, I don't know, you know, manufacturing, compounding. Enough that we could, and I'm just making sure, does that encompass that, you know? You know, when I think of a medical researcher, you know, we're, we're just analyzing blood or, I think in toxic waste, I'm thinking those things, but I really want to bring this on board. Could you just talk a little bit about that?
So I think I'm gonna go with what, uh, are you the chair? What your chair suggested, which is, um, if we want to go that route, then I'll submit another application to have that one in. I think I agree with him that I should stick with just the medical clinical, which is the primary care office, and then the newspaper printing and the retail. So I'm not gonna add in, yeah, I'm not requesting for the scientific. I think it makes sense.
Yeah, and, and I mean, just-
And I didn't do a parking calculation based on scientific, so I couldn't answer the question.
Right, so, and just to be clear procedurally too, there, the request is multiple principal uses. But the principal uses still need to follow the zoning bylaw.
Absolutely.
For that, for that, so.
For that district.
So in other, for that district. So in other, if they wanted to do something that's not permitted, that's an entirely separate-
That's exactly right.
Request, so. Um, that's the way I'm, I'm doing it. I think that's the way.
Yes, that clarifies it for me. We're just looking at a regular clinic and take doctor office visits with associated labs and they outsource a lot from, you know, uh, those labs may not even be getting done there. They may take tests, but I think they get set out, sent out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Uh, no comment.
Yeah, uh, so I don't really have any further questions other than what I asked. It is, it does feel very similar to the exact same thing you were here-
Yes.
Before us, uh, uh, earlier this year, so I don't really see a problem with it.
Great.
Do we have anybody from the public who needs, who has questions? Anybody raising a hand on Zoom?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, and I would say-
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion has been made to close the public hearing with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay. Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Jamie?
Aye.
And Doris?
Aye.
Uh, William's eye. Okay, public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on the application?
I'll make a, a motion to approve the application as written.
I'll second that.
All right, motion to approve the application as written has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay. Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And William's eye.
Thank you very much. I'm sure I'll see you guys next month.
Make this a regular cadence. Okay. All right, that takes us to seven forty-five on the agenda.
We, we caught up a little bit, Doug.
Two fifty Turnpike Road, zero Parkerville Road, uh, F D two fifty Turnpike LLC comprehensive permit.
Charville, how are you?
How's it going?
I'm gonna try to help you catch up even more.
Okay, all right, uh, if you, yeah, if you could, we know you, but you just identify yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Brian Charville with Ferris Development Group, and we're counsel for the applicant, which is F D two hundred fifty Turnpike LLC.
Okay.
Pardon my voice, I have a cold.
Yep, okay, no problem at all. And, um, so, uh, I, I'll try to help out a little bit here.
Thank you.
The, so, at our, our last, uh, hearing, uh, I think we, we kind of focused on the, on the study of, uh, what are the words are failing me now, the, the-
The Vernal Pool.
Vernal Pool. And we know that there was agreement between the applicant and our, uh, the peer reviewer. And my understanding is that's, that's started.
Correct.
Because the, at the last meeting- Because the, at the last meeting, we said it has to happen soon because it's a seasonal thing.
That's right.
It's driven by the weather. So that's good news that, that that is happening right now.
Yes, it was set up, that testing arrangement and the fencing and buckets was set up last week. Mr. Orzal, your peer reviewer reviewed it, and then the buckets were opened over the weekend.
Okay.
And they've been making observations throughout this week and it'll continue, I think, for two more weeks.
And the, the peer reviewer is, you know, what, I, I think that was the request from conservation was that they be part of at least the setup. And it sounds to me, what you're telling me is that he was.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah, there, they inspected the installation of the silt fence and the traps as well.
Okay.
After everything was installed.
Okay, good, good. Um, but I also know that you, uh, sent a notification that you wanted, wanted to continue tonight without any testimony.
Yes.
Um, so the, the one thing I, I, I think we're generally okay with that, but I think we need to talk about the, um, moving out the, the, the date.
Understood.
So, um, do you have, I don't know what your feeling is on where you are now, because I know, um, there's still more work to do, uh, environmentally here.
That's right.
And, and I don't, I don't know so much the civil, but the environmental for, for certain, right?
Correct.
So I don't know what your feeling is on when you can come back for a hearing and how far out you're willing to push that approval date.
We were thinking about coming back to have a substantive discussion at your scheduled meeting on April sixteenth.
Okay.
If that's okay. By then, the, um, migration study would be complete.
Okay.
And the folks at Goddardwood, it will have been able to write it up.
Yeah.
And Lucas will be able to review it.
Okay.
We think. And so, um, and also our engineer is finishing the septic system design, which he'll be able to share with Mr. Costello and the Board of Health to review.
Okay.
And that kind of bears upon that tributary question that has come up with Lucas.
Yeah, that's an area where there's not agreement right now.
Not yet, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So we thought April sixteenth for substantive discussion, and I can't remember what the current deadline is for the public hearing to close.
April thirtieth.
April thirtieth?
Yeah, I would think at least the end of May would be totally fine sitting here now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you get, or somebody get me a letter?
Of course, yeah, we'll do.
Thank you.
Okay, is there, do you have anything else you'd like to bring up tonight?
No, um, earlier today, we did file with the board, uh, some very helpful feedback we got from the Southborough Fire Department about, uh, work we're able to do onsite, which will alleviate their concerns about the need for a fire lane coming from Parkerville Road. I was able to share that with the Butters Council, Mr. St. Andre as well. And I know that they were, I, I think in support of that outcome.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I know what we talked about last time. We were talking about secondary access and that seemed problematic. I did see the communication between you and the Southborough, uh, Fire Chief, so
Yeah.
Uh, I concur with everything that you said. It sounds like he's in agreement with where you are. There's, you know, still a little bit more, I guess, work or checking or whatever to do in terms of the, whether you need a sprinkler or not.
Yes.
But it, I, it, it sounds like it's going down a good path.
Agreed.
So you're, yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. I had almost forgotten that. Um, but I didn't think we really had anything else much more to talk about this evening.
Agreed.
Correct, right, okay. Um, okay, so you're, you will submit something to, um, to extend the, the, the date to close the, the hearing, correct? Um, and we just need to, and you, you agree with, well, obviously you requested to move out to April sixteenth, so I think we just need a, a motion to continue the hearing to April sixteenth, and we're gonna have to say seven fifteen?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue the meeting to April sixteenth at seven forty-five.
Okay. All right, motion to continue to April sixteenth at seven forty-five is made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye. Oppose nay, now, um, I'll actually.
Yeah, I can't vote on that.
Yeah. All right, so I hear your second.
I just won't vote on my move.
Yeah, Doug?
Aye.
All right, um, Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Hi.
And Jamie?
Hi.
Uh, William's eye.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you on April sixteenth. Hopefully with your voice.
Hopefully it's quick too.
Yeah, hopefully it doesn't last long. Um, okay. Uh, remaining on the agenda, other prop, other business prop for the board, one twenty Turnpike Road easement and subdivision plan review. We don't have anything new to discuss, do we?
Correct. I had added this to the agenda because on February twenty-sixth, you guys had decided to table it to this meeting.
Yep.
We haven't received any revisions, so we can.
Yeah, and it's, it, it's not a hearing, so we can, we can just move on.
I, um, after kicking a few drafts back and forth with the surveyors, I can say that, um, a final version was finished today.
Okay.
And I just didn't want to rush anything by trying to get it in. Folks don't have a chance to review it.
Yeah.
So it should be on a glide path hopefully for April sixteenth.
Okay, okay.
See you very, very soon.
Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. All right, so then we're moving right into approval of meeting minutes for February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I will just handle them one at a time. I reviewed the, the meeting minutes, uh, and did not find any problems with them. Any, any comments on the meeting minutes for February?
Reviewed, no comments.
No comment.
Nope.
Ladies?
Nope. No.
Take the motion to approve those meetings, meeting minutes as drafted?
Second?
All right, motion to approve the February twelfth, twenty twenty-five minutes as drafted has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay. Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Doris?
Hi.
And Jamie?
Hi.
Okay, William's eye. Okay, uh, and the other minutes we have are for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. I gave, uh, Laura a minor tweak on the, the spelling of leech, but uh, other than that, they looked fine to me. Those were, they're, and again, they're detailed as usual. Um, any other discussion on the minutes?
No comments.
Okay.
Well, I wasn't super present, so I have no comments.
Okay, good to know.
Me neither.
Ah, that's true. Doris?
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, we were just discussing, do you have any, any discussion on the, on the, on the minutes for, uh, February twenty-sixth?
I do not.
And Jamie?
Nope.
Okay. So who was present for that meeting?
Uh, everybody but Paul, I think.
Everybody but Paul, okay.
Thanks.
In general, I do, yes, but.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes as written for February twenty-sixth? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made to approve the minutes as written, has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay. Doug?
Aye.
Mike? Uh, Jamie?
Hi.
Doris?
Hi.
And William's eye. Okay, the minutes are approved, thank you. Um, last thing we have on the agenda, administrative updates, and this is the Laura Davis section of the meeting.
I don't really have much for you guys. Um, just a reminder that town meeting is coming up in April. We have the A D U bylaw. Yay.
Are you gonna be, are you gonna be there to talk about it, Mike?
I'm gonna be there to show up.
Because, okay, because I'm not talking about it. I, I yield the floor to you.
I have been speaking on this minimum three times a week, every single week, so I'll.
What are these again? I've heard about it a little bit.
So, so, so this makes you infinitely more qualified.
I will absolutely. Speak aware.
Love that.
Do we have an updated, that, um, draft regs?
I have not seen anything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't me.
Yeah.
So I reached out to Jay on another matter and I hadn't heard back. Surprised, because he's usually like, we do respond.
Sometimes you just need to give him a little nudge. He'll get back.
I was just curious if I may have missed a planning board meeting on this. I've just looked straight out, so.
I mean, I think they discussed it, but I haven't seen a new draft come through.
Yeah.
Um.
I think we were really close on the last set. We were right there.
I think so. I think there was. Who was it? There was concern about something. I know, so I'm part of like a zoning working group with the building commissioner and Mimi and Karina and Al Hamilton and Gregory. Um, and there was some concern in that group about the Ebribe site plan that was part of the draft.
What does that mean?
And why is it necessary? Um, so I don't know if that.
Why is it reviewed or?
No, just why is it necessary in general? Um, yeah, so I, I know there was some concern about that, but I don't know what the planning board discussion was about that, so. What's the last one? Yeah. So I think it's, the concern was more about what exactly are we looking at? Um, and do we really need to do that? Or is that captured within like the building permit process? So. Yeah. No, that's, that's why it was a discussion, because it was just a question that came up and.
We all, oh, sure. That, that, you know, that basketball court that got approved on Sears Road is the perfect example of why you don't want building commissioner making such calls. But that was, that milk was out of the cow. Who, who signed off on that? No.
Okay, um. Updates on the shared parking?
Shared parking, last I heard, they were looking to make, see if they needed to have it as a special permit, or if it could just be incorporated into our current site plan process. Um, like major site plan approval through planning board. They didn't want, I think the consensus was that they didn't necessarily want it to be a special permit because it was another burden on applicants and they wanted to make it as easy as possible. So that's, those two will be on the warrant for town meeting.
See how that goes.
Yeah.
I'll talk to you, I have a question.
You got it.
Because I want to hear about that building. I have a question about eighty years.
Yeah?
Yes, right, all right.
And the last item is just coming meetings. We know we have April sixteenth.
Yep, so.
What do we have on, you know, the agenda then?
We'll have four public hearings at this point. We'll have six Lorenzo. We have, um, one on Corderville Road for signs. Shannon will be back for that one. Um, and then we have a variance for a proposed garage, um, over on Granuale and then two fifty Turnpike. So. Yeah, B B A applications are up this year, so we had eleven regular applications last year and I think we're already at like seven with more on the way, so. We're busy, which is good.
That is a good thing. And, and, yeah, it indicates, uh.
Mike?
Sorry, it, it indicates activity. So, um, do, and what's the, what's the schedule for May, you know?
For May, I think it was.
Applications.
We are looking at May twenty-first. Um, though the filing deadline for that is April first and.
It's not that far away.
There's, there's some whispers of applications, so I would anticipate one or two.
From, um, from a logistics standpoint, are we gonna try to get back on to like a regular schedule? We're beaten.
We have been on a regular schedule except for February twenty-sixth.
And these, yeah, these folks with these fancy permits keep, you know, can we just like get to like
Oh.
Once a month at the same.
Yes, so.
Bill, like the third, if it's the third Wednesday?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's up to you guys, right, with scheduling. It's the forty Bs that have added additional meetings. Um.
Just to be grumpy, I, I, I would like to say that if it's a forty B, then they need to like stick with our schedule and not be dictating what the schedule is. And if, I know in the past it's been like, well, then, you know, it's a, it's a timeline, it's a deadline, you gotta make a vote, then we'll vote, then we'll do the vote. You know, that happened, you know, previously when it's like, if you really want us to vote now, you're not gonna like the response, so. I, I just would like to get to a, uh, and again, I, I understand that there's, there's time sensitivity, but I think that the applicant should be able to, to work within that sensitivity.
I, I couldn't.
Because I'm on a, I'm on another board and it's just like, tonight I had another board meeting and I can't be at old places than I can ever remember what Wednesday is, whatever.
So, I mean, this was our regularly scheduled meetings.
I mean, it's progress.
So I don't, I think the next one that might be a little wonky, it's either because of vacation or something like that, but it's not because of, like, we don't have additional meetings scheduled right now. Um, I do want to let you guys know that remote meetings, the bill passed the House.
Did, yeah.
Going to the Senate tomorrow, so fingers crossed. So hopefully we should be good to. Yeah.
But.
And if we have a meeting that has no forty Bs, maybe we can just be on Zoom.
So when are we, when, when is May again? Then you were saying twenty-first?
May twenty-first.
Yeah, and I, I know, I, I think especially we were heading into the redo of Park Central. That just felt like that, there was so much heat on that, that. I think I wanted, I wanted, I wanted a separate night.
I, I couldn't.
And I wanted to limit it.
Couldn't agree more.
That's plutonium.
Yeah, and, and the way one twenty went and the path we're on with two fifty, uh, it's much, much calmer, right? And I, I, like, I think the, the last hearing was a good example of that. It, it actually was fairly tidy considering what was covered.
It was heavy content.
Yeah, and, and that does give us a better opportunity.
Bring a cup of coffee for that.
Yeah, that does give us a better.
As boring as it gets.
A better opportunity, you know, to, to keep on the regular schedule and say, look, you're gonna be seven forty-five like that, the next one. So I, I hear you on that. Um, I do, I just, I do want to say, I think the Park Central thing was, was out there a bit, so.
No, I feel, I, because again, we're here for the town. The town, that, that's under a microscope and that needed air and time and.
Right, and, and so many people that had things to say, uh, were, were, were getting.
We needed a special.
We did. We're, we're getting, uh, you know, people speaking at, at these other forty Bs, but it's, it's not the same level. It's not the nu- number, it's not the intensity, so, uh, and it's just not, like you said, it's not plutonium, so. Okay.